In six weeks, I gotta go get ready to go to camp.
You're on break.
Yeah, I'm on break. Now I gotta get in condition for next year.
All right, let's get started. Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka Planning Commission meeting. We are commissioned appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings, and to make recommendations to the city council on planning items. Please note that the city council rules state that the public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the planning commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the city council. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the city council next month. Agendas can be found at topeka.org. Many of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning department staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then we will receive public testimony. Public comments shall be addressed solely to the chair and are limited to four minutes. Chris, please take roll.
Mr. Armstrong?
Here.
Mr. Beck?
Here.
Ms. Cavazos? Mr. Gales?
Here.
Mr. Haw?
Here.
Ms. Jordan? Mr. Knar?
Here.
Ms. Ringler?
Here.
Mr. Woods? We have six in a quorum.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, I think everyone has a copy of our minutes from the February 15th meeting. Do we have any observations, changes, corrections, or motions?
I would move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion about the minutes? Seeing none, why don't we take a roll? Chris?
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Gales?
Aye.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Mr. Knar?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Super. All right, moving along. Communications to the commission. Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, I do not have any communications tonight.
All right, there must be a good game on later. Did I say that out loud? Okay. All right, we'll move ahead quickly here. Declaration of conflict of interest or ex parte communications. I notice we have several action items. Any of the members have declarations? Seeing none? Okay, we'll move along. All right, to the action items. Item E1, initiation of rezoning and review annexation for West Indian Hills subdivision number 12.
Commissioners, I will handle the next, this item. It actually has two parts, a rezoning and an annexation review for West Indian Hills subdivision number 12. We'll talk about both items together, but ask for two separate votes. I also want to point out, you might have noticed in the memo for the annexation, that this planning commission meeting is also serving as a neighborhood information meeting for this project. And we invited people that are around that particular property to talk to staff or come to this particular meeting if they had questions or concerns about the annexation. I'm going to speak first about the annexation. This particular annexation request is for, again, West Indian Hills subdivision number 12. This property is approximately 1.46 acres and is intended to develop as a four-lot, single-family subdivision. This property had a minor plat administratively approved by staff earlier this year, and it was for four lots. You can see on the overhead on the map, it's the property outlined in white. That is proposed for annexation. This area is predominantly developed with single-family residential uses that have been annexed into the city. This is one of the remnants of this area that, for one reason or another, has not been yet developed. This property is contiguous to the city boundary, and the owner has provided written consent as such. It's eligible for annexation under KSA 1250, which doesn't require a public hearing or notice. The Topeka governing body can annex this property by adopting an ordinance. Our land use and growth management plan talks about having the planning commission review annexations that are 10 acres or greater for consistency with the comprehensive plan. This particular property obviously is not 10 acres or greater, but we thought it made some sense to have you review this project as, in addition to, since you're also reviewing the, or being asked to initiate the rezoning. This property lies within Tier Two of the urban growth area as such. It means that all the urban services and infrastructure are available. It's contiguous to the city, and developing that will allow the city to grow in a compact and affordable manner. As I mentioned previously, there are existing subdivisions that surround this property. Urban services and infrastructure are definitely available in this area, and annexing this property will allow the city to grow compactly and affordably. So the staff recommends approval, or recommends that the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval of this annexation to the governing body. Are there any questions about the annexation? All right. We'll move quickly to the rezoning initiation. This property is currently zoned R1, which is a rural residential reserve district. Just by the name, you can tell that that property is not meant for an urban development. Once this property is annexed into the city, it would be appropriate to rezone it to a more urban zoning district. The, we're not asking this evening for you to approve the rezoning. We're asking you to initiate the rezoning. We'll come back at a future date with a public hearing and consideration of a new zoning district for that property. So staff recommends that planning commission initiate the rezoning of West Indian Hills subdivision number 12. Are there any questions?
So to make sure when you say initiate, we are approving your request to move forward with the rezoning, then it has to go before city council, correct?
You are essentially starting the process. So you're saying it's okay to move forward with processing the rezoning to approve the rezone, not to approve the rezoning, but to get that process started. So we'll come back to this body, the planning commission, with a public hearing if you decide to initiate the zoning.
Okay. And then the reality is, we can't have any type of rezoning till it is annexed, so basically it's a chicken and egg kind of moment.
Right. We will not bring that rezoning request back to you until the property's been annexed by Topeka.
Yep. Any questions for staff? Is everyone familiar with the property and circumstances? Actually, when I was an intern before I graduated, I lived in a house that backed that property, or just the edge of it, so I'm very familiar with it. There were a lot less homes around that area than, I'm not saying that was a long time ago, I'm just saying there were a lot less homes. So I guess I need to clarify here, since we're approaching this a little differently, we're going to still have public hearings since we have, basically, the simultaneous public meeting with this review, basically. Is that my understanding, or?
I'm sorry, I missed the first part of your question.
Since we're going to have the official public hearing of this, or as it would have been done, a community hearing or neighborhood hearing, we're doing that simultaneously with its presentation to us. Protocol, I just want to confirm here, Mary, that we're going to kind of follow standard procedure and allow, and open it up for public comments.
This is on the rezoning you're talking about?
Both items.
Is this just a neighborhood meeting, though, for the rezoning?
Yes.
Because we don't need a public hearing to initiate rezoning.
Okay. So will we, I guess my clarification, I apologize for not doing this beforehand, we use our standard public hearing.
Protocol.
Protocol as we do this.
Yeah.
Even though our action is simply to approve the process of moving forward, even though we're not approving anything technically.
Yes.
Okay. And we'll have two votes since we have two items.
Yep.
Okay. Super. So any further questions about the process, or any other questions of staff regarding the item?
My only question, Mr. Chairman, would be to the staff. At this point, you do not know what zoning you would be applying for, or don't?
Well, I guess not officially, but it would make sense to propose R1, which is what's around it, basically.
And outside of the lot, across the street to the south, it is all single-family homes, the entire area?
Yes.
To the west, north, south, and east. Good question. Any further questions, or? Yes, Mr. Armstrong?
What can't they do with RR1 that they would intend to do with R1? Nothing, really. I mean, it's essentially a single-family use. It's just that the RR1 is more of a county, a rural designation, whereas the R1 is, you know, the city's single-family zoning district. They could actually, after it's been annexed, pull building permits with that R1 zoning. It's really more of a process, processing thing to get it under the correct city zoning. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I could also add that there is provisions in the RR1 that allow nurseries and some ag-type uses that you wouldn't have in the R1. There's no, so there are some looser, I would call them looser restrictions that we don't want to have in the urban area.
Yeah, the agricultural caveat is in the RR1. The farm has been surrounded by the city, and it still has a little hobby farm. It can proceed accordingly until it's rezoned residential. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we will use this time then to open the meeting up for public comments. We're going to use standard protocols that we would for a normal public hearing, so at this time, if someone would like to step forward in the audience and have any comments, actually, I guess the city is the owner of this, so we don't, is there, before I say that, we don't really have a owner's representative, or we do have an owner's representative?
We don't have the owner here. We are essentially the representative of the city.
It kind of seems like I'm not sure what I'm doing here today, but I'm doing this because we have one person in the audience. I kind of feel like normally it makes it easy. So at this time, we're going to open it up for public comments. If anyone in the audience would like to step forward and comment regarding this matter, please do so. All right, this is going to make it easy. So we're going to close the public comments session. All right, so fellow commissioners, any further observations or questions for staff or amongst ourselves? Yes?
I would move that we recommend approval to city council for the annexation. Which one are we doing first? We're doing the annexation first, since it has to come before rezoning. So I would recommend that we provide recommendation of approval to city council for the annexation of the property.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
And we have a second. I'll give credit to Mr. Haw on that one. Motion and a second. Any further conversation or discussion? Just, I would note that it does seem appropriate, especially if their intentions are residential, that basically it's landlocked, so it would seem appropriate that it's time to be annexed and rezoned, so. No further conversation or discussion? We have a motion and a second. Chris, please take roll.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Mr. Knar?
Aye.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Mr. Gales?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, so the second item, then, second element of this item is then consideration of initiating a rezoning of West Indian Hills subdivision. Obviously, that's subject to the annexation, so I guess what we need to be on record is, is that we are approving of that process too, if I understand. Mr. Warner, is that correct?
That is correct. You are starting the process.
Okay, so this would deal with action item A. Since we have approved, moving forward with annexation, now we're going to do so accordingly with rezoning. So is there any further discussion regarding this item? Is there a motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion, knowing full well that we're just initiating the process. Any active rezoning then would come before us, and we would know what that is at that time. So I would make the recommendation that we initiate the rezoning process for this property.
Motion. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Chris, please take roll.
Mr. Armstrong?
Aye.
Mr. Beck?
Aye.
Mr. Gales?
Aye.
Mr. Haw?
Aye.
Mr. Knar?
Aye.
Ms. Ringler?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's move to action item two.
Commissioners, I'll be presenting this item. This item is an amendment to the text of the zoning ordinance to change the standards that apply to planned unit developments. Just first, as a reminder of what a planned unit development is, a planned unit development is a type of zoning district, type of zoning classification. As opposed to other zoning districts, which we often refer to as straight zoning, a PUD is something tied to a specific plan or program, whereas straight zoning districts don't have conditions attached to them. They, if someone gets straight zoning, they are accorded the rights that are defined in the zoning ordinance for that zoning district. With a PUD zone, there's a master plan or a program attached to that that spells out the conditions of that zoning district. So with a PUD, we refer to as a PUD, it takes some of the risk out of it for neighboring property owners and other stakeholders. Under the current regulations, a PUD can be applied under two different situations. One, if the property is over an acre in size. Two, if it's less than an acre, you can apply for a, an applicant can apply for a PUD zoning district if it's considered a transitional use or a transition use. Attached to the staff report, there's a section on the code that describes this where the amendment is included. And a transition area is defined as an area that separates a non-residential use group classification, O-N-I-1, excuse me, O-N-I, which is office and institutional, C, commercial, or I, industrial districts, or PUD with those different use groups attached to them. If it doesn't meet any of those conditions, you cannot apply, currently you cannot apply for PUD zoning for less than an acre, for parcels less than an acre. What is being proposed with this amendment is that if someone has less than an acre, but they want to retain the building, they need to change the zoning to allow a use that's not currently allowed in that zoning district to a less restrictive zoning district, and they're willing to retain the building and adapt it for that new use, they can apply for a PUD zoning district. So I've given you a handout. This is kind of difficult to read. This is a beginning of a few different examples. First is adapting a church building. So let's say there's a church building. Church buildings, what we categorize as religious assembly in the zoning ordinance are an allowed use, specific to certain, subject to specific use standards in residential districts. So it's quite common to see church buildings, old church buildings, in fact, in residential districts. If someone were to adapt that building to a different use, it might be difficult under that current zoning district. So if you look at this example, as you can see from the chart, religious assembly in the R1 zone, R2, R3, and also the M1 zone, which is two families residential zoning district, i.e. duplexes, religious assembly is allowed, subject to specific use standards. If someone were to, let's say, want to adapt a church building to, say, an organization like a club or a lodge for social, educational, recreational purposes, as you can see from the land use matrix, that particular land use would require O-N-I-2 or O-N-I-3 zoning. The tricky part is, is that if someone were to obtain that zoning district or that zoning classification for that property, they would also be allowed to use the property for all of the other uses that are allowed in that district. Without a PUD, you cannot tie, you can't tie that zone change to the retention of that building, the preservation of that building in some cases, and you cannot restrict its use. And I have a few examples. Well, before we move on to the next slide, if you look at the next row there, bank, financial institution. So if someone were to obtain rezoning for a use in the middle of a residential neighborhood, they would also be allowed to put in a bank. It'd be a use that's allowed by right. They'd also be allowed to put in a health clinic, use allowed by right. So a PUD is a way to address that concern. This is an example, this is in southeast Topeka, and, or, excuse me, east Topeka, and it's at Lime and Seventh, and it's, there's a church there. I recently read where that church was closing. I don't know if it actually closed, but in order, this is an example, if someone wanted to adapt that to a different use, they, under the current regulations, they would have to have straight zoning. The problem with that is, is you can see that that property is surrounded by what is R2 zoning, so it's not adjacent to any office and institutional zoning, and there's no plan that foresees that that area's going to be changed to that type of zoning. The neighborhood plan doesn't necessarily address it that way. So it can be, it could be criticized as being spot zoning, and there could be some concerns about its being incompatible. Where, as with a PUD master plan, you could tie it to the preservation of the building if that building, if that was an important element, and you could restrict the use to one or two uses. This is another example, another church. This is at Fourth and Fillmore, and this building is occupied, I'm just using an example here, but the church property is a little less than an acre, about three-quarters of an acre. And again, if someone was going to adapt this building, if they tried to change the zoning to a straight zoning district, it's surrounded by R2 zoning, and it could be considered to be incompatible, and there's some risk of someone coming in later and putting in a use that was certainly not compatible. I'm going to go to this other example here. Some of you might be familiar with the Buchanan Center. This is at, I think it's at 12th?
Both in Buchanan.
Both in Buchanan. This used to be a school. There aren't a lot of schools, there aren't a lot of vacant school buildings now that are on less than an acre, but this happens to be on property that was less than an acre. It's existed as the Buchanan Center or as an institutional use for a very long time other than a school. But if someone were to do this today, it'd be difficult to do this under current zoning regulations because it's not adjacent to any office zoning or commercial zoning, and therefore you couldn't do it as a transitional zoning district, or, excuse me, a transitional use, and it'd be difficult to do it as straight zoning because it's in the middle of a lot of other residential zoning. So here's another example, and this is, this is something you're going to see, we expect, in the next couple of months. We've received an application to adapt a single-family residence, a large building, probably 3,000 square feet, on Clay Street, and adapt it for reuse as a correctional placement facility. And as you can see from the table, a single-family residence is an allowed use in the R1, M1, M2, and M3 zones. Correctional placement residence requires M2 zoning, M2 zoning with conditional use permit. The challenge of rezoning it to M2 without placing other conditions on it is it allows all the other uses that are allowed in the M2 district. If you look at the row, two-family dwelling and three- or four-family dwelling, you can see that those uses are allowed. However, there might be, the neighborhood plan or the comprehensive plan might, that might conflict with that, and there's also the concern of that being potentially spot zoning. This is a map showing the site on Clay. It backs up to a multifamily residential development. It's a PUD with an M2 use group. So just to summarize here, why is it a good thing to have this opportunity to have a PUD on less than an acre? It's not a considered transition area? It seems that it would allow greater flexibility without the problem of creating, or the potential problem of creating a spot zoning situation, or creating a conflict with the comprehensive plan or the applicable neighborhood plan. It encourages the adaptive reuse of buildings that might otherwise sit vacant, be difficult to develop. One thing that is real common in this residential neighborhood are large, single-family residences. Some of those are vacant, and it's difficult to adapt those to other uses because it would be difficult for someone to go in there and restore the building for a single-family residence. It's just the economics of it make that difficult. So in this way, this amendment encourages reinvestment and revitalization in neighborhoods where there are buildings that are going underutilized or even sitting vacant. So staff's recommending that the planning commission make a recommendation of approval to the city council. City council has the authority to approve a text amendment, and with that, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Mr. Haw, I have a question. Help me with what would have been the reasoning for the one-acre minimum requirement for PUD in the first place?
My understanding is it just places some limits, so there's just not, it doesn't just open the door to PUDs because it'd be too easy to do a PUD as just a way to skirt the zoning regulations and the integrity of the zoning map. And with the proposed text amendment, the way that's further controlled is it only applies to the adaptive reuse of buildings. Bill probably has a little more background on it.
I may add, if I may, the history of the PUD district. Originally, the minimum was five acres, some, when I first started, certainly, and at some point, we kind of ran in the same situation, is that we were running up against the choice of having a straight zoning with no restrictions, no conditional zoning, basically, or a spot zoning. And neither, we weren't able to make, it wasn't a very flexible zoning situation. The original intent was, PUDs were big projects. They were mixed-use, or they were larger with residential projects with private streets because you can't do private streets without a PUD, so it had to be somewhat large, and so this came all about in probably the 70s. You had a lot of, you know, Pepper Tree off of Burlingame as a PUD. There's all sorts of residential PUDs that started, and then over time, it started to be used more. Instead of going ahead and... Instead of going ahead and updating our zoning code with each individual district, and maybe having some design guidelines in there, and we just had a, had a, throughout, used the PUD a lot. And so it started to get used in a way that, as Mike said, kind of would skirt around the whole idea of what it was intended for, but now it's morphed into a, a tool, actually a real useful tool, that can protect both the development proposal, as well as the neighborhood that it might need to be compatible with. So it really, we don't, you know, there's, we don't want to, you know, I guess, I guess every zone, every development proposal could be a special permit, or a special zoning district, but that's not very efficient in how, and predictable for a neighborhood, because a PUD, as you know, can be anything, can be any zoning district. So we want to limit those to very specific reasons that will help compatibility in a neighborhood. And so the proposed way that's before you is just another, figure we open the door a little bit more, so that we can address some of these unique properties that we have in our older neighborhoods from time to time, that we want to have reused. That's, our growth management plan is to, is to reuse and invest where we are, and we can't get there without being more inclusive of, of all properties.
And so to be clear, obviously, the language only allows an adaptive reuse to occur. We can't, someone can't come along and say, "Well, I have a vacant lot now between two R1 lots, and I want to put a similar project in between it." That's, we're going to build a, which, that's what we want to avoid, is getting into that kind of spot zoning type of adjustment, to the greatest extent possible.
Mr. Chair, as, as a perfect example, actually, we've talked about is, what if this property here was a, was just a vacant lot? Would we want to allow apartment complex to come in?
No. I mean, that, that would be, we went through a series of neighborhood downzoonings, mostly single-family areas, so no. But the fact that the building is there, and it's, it's in everybody's best interest if it's reused, as long as it's compatible, and we can put, and the only way we can really do that is with conditions, and, and going through a public process.
Sure.
So that's what the, it allows.
And the conditions allow kind of for, I don't want to call it horse trading, but allow for some layers of give and take with the property owner, or the proposed user, to account for some flexibility in, in how the building is used, then they, there are some other restrictions that are maybe put on them, or other requirements, and we're, like, somewhere that we might see another PUD that has multiple zoning overlays to it.
For instance, a condition here could be, we could limit the, the number of occupants, or number of rooms, so it doesn't get, it doesn't go beyond what it already is, and is, and, like I said, can be compatible, considered compatible.
Or fewer parking stalls than may be allowed with the proposed multi-tenant building.
Correct. Considering the type of use and the occupants, in a, in a setting that might have occupants that don't have cars, that would be appropriate, but not every multiple-family use would have that, so, yes.
Yes. Other questions for staff?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think you, thank you.
Go ahead, please, Mr. Woods, I wasn't going to stop you.
I think both Mr. Feinder and Mr. Hall kind of answered these questions and answered to yours. I was just going to ask, what possible problems would you see coming out of these? Where would you ever have to deal with someone trying to skirt the law, or, you know, using the one-acre exemption as getting the camel's nose under the tent?
I suppose, once they have that, Mr. Chair, once they have that PUD zoning, I suppose they could try to transition to a different use without understanding what the restrictions are, but I think that could, that could be done in any case. So I, I don't really see much of a downside, I suppose, you know, in, in looking at the examples where this could be used, I don't think there are that many examples where it makes sense, and that's probably a good thing, because I, I don't think that you want to be seeing 10 of these a year, for example, and I, I just don't believe you are going to see very many of them.
I think.
But I, but I think where it really makes sense is where you have, let's say you have a really iconic building that's, that's compatible with the neighborhood, in fact, it's what gives the neighborhood its character, and the current use is just no longer feasible. There's no market for it, or there's no demand for it, and therefore, this allows someone else to come in and use that building, and, and a building that's being used is a building that's going to be, more likely to be maintained.
Well, definitely like a closed school. There, there are no students.
Correct.
In this case, where you have a neighborhood full of smaller homes, but you have one or two, two and a half, or three-story homes that are really, aren't, they're oversized for a small family use, so you can modify the use with this PUD overlay to allow for a compatible use to occur in the neighborhood with conditions. And I would, I guess, as I look at this in my experience with PUDs in the past, the process would kind of restrict getting outside of the boundaries here, meaning that if someone who bought this lot went to buy another two or three lots adjacent to it, they really would not be able to just freely go through there and do what they wanted, then with all these lots in a row, they'd have to come back and rezone them, and, and go through this process, which would allow for a vetting out of a use that wouldn't be appropriate for the neighborhood, so.
Yeah, I would, Mr. Chair, I would tend to agree. You know, we, we, we have many examples that come to us that you never make it to this body, that we either have to say, you know, that's not a great idea, we don't think that's going to meet our princ, zoning principles or, or plan, but if we had a little more of a, of a tool, we could, and, but it's not, it's, it's not, it doesn't, it's not intended for the, a green field in the middle of the neighborhood, it's intended to reuse what's, what's there, so, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Beck?
I have one question, just procedurally then, with this change for any property under an acre, those would still come before this body for approval at each, each instance? Is that correct? No administrative approvals?
Anytime there's a, a new PUD, that's a rezone, so that would go before the Planning Commission for a recommendation to the City Council. If there's a major amendment to a PUD, a change of use, if, if the nature of the use is changing, that's, that's considered a major amendment, so that would go before Planning Commission, City Council, or if there's a substantial addition to a building, or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you. I noticed in looking through the language here that, you know, you, like, for instance, removing comparable and actually taking it, using in lieu of that the word "compatible" kind of refines or, or redefines the, kind of how you can restrict things that would not be, you know, conducive to the neighborhood, so you actually get to have a little more control, I would say. Because something that's comparable does not necessarily have to be compatible, so I think the "compatible" word helps with some of this, so my compliments in, in your vetting out of the language to provide this opportunity, so. Other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the floor up for public comments. If anyone in the audience would like to step forward and comment regarding this matter, please do so. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comments portion of the meeting. Members of the staff, any further observations, or comments, or motions?
Mr. Chairman, I have one, one question of staff on the planned unit development district section on intent. You could look at that with me, and I, this has not been, not been changed, but I'm, this was, maybe I'm not reading this correctly, but the first, first sentence in that paragraph, would it be, is the intent to generally not, where it says that are generally possible under district application of the regulations in other districts, are, if you're trying to make more creative and more innovative, would you generally not, it would generally not be possible under the, the other stricter regulations? Should there be inserting a "not" after "generally"?
Which sentence are you on?
First.
Very first sentence. If, if reading that through, if you would add "not" right after "generally" and before "possible," that isn't what, what you intended?
That's probably right.
Yeah.
I guess. Can you say something?
My compliments, Mr. Hall.
Yeah.
He read more than the other line.
That's right. Those working late nights as an English instructor.
I had to read that several times, and I just wondered if that was the intent.
But that's. Yeah, yes, yeah, I agree.
You think that's right? No?
Generally not possible.
So our consensus is yes, that is a good, that is a good catch, we can add "not" in front of, it'd be after "generally," correct? Or before "generally"? Either one. I'll leave that up to Mary.
All wordsmithing.
And then, I also was wondering, at the, about the last sentence in, in that first paragraph, you made me look at this, and as, as we kind of explained, this, the PUD's not really intended to, for development on a lot-by-lot basis, and that's kind of what that says there, and yet we're changing our rules, and we're literally doing it on a lot-by-lot basis, so what I, what I would maybe add, that we should, it should be primarily for, for such development on a, other than a lot-by-lot basis, so that we're not at odds with our intent as well, so that, I'd throw that out there.
So may I, if I may ask you to rephrase that, are you suggesting you would like to modify the language in that last sentence? Because I read that, that, the reality is, you don't want this to be anything more than a lot-by-lot review, whereas this implies that it is for something other than a lot-by-lot review.
I, I didn't want to be at odds with the intent if we were going to use this new one, less than one acre tool for a particular lot, particular lots, another lot, so if, so really it's more for, we need to make a change, make a change.
For such development on other.
You're thinking a, a couple of, you know, your folks down the road, successors, how they'll interpret this?
Right. This is, again, we're opening that door a little bit, but if somebody could come back and, and close it, if, if this intent is phrased the, maybe the way it is.
So if you, Mr. Feinder, if you read that sentence, then the reality is someone could come in here with two lots, because by reading this sentence, it could be used for something other than a lot-by-lot basis.
Yeah, I, I don't want it to, to ever be used to force somebody into adding more lots to their proposal, or, it's, it, it, the intent is primarily so that we can do development other than on a lot-by-lot basis, that's, that's, that's all. So I would, I would phrase it, the requirements contained here and are set forth to provide, to, to primarily provide for such development on other than a lot-by-lot basis, so that it's, it's a little more inclusive. But if you think that opens the door up too much, I'm, I'm okay.
I would ask, is that last sentence even necessary?
You read the two previous sentences, I think you make it clear what your intentions are. You sort of make it confusing if you leave that last one in there. Not to get all wordsmithy on you, but I might have to break Mr. Hall out here to get interpretation.
That, I, I think we'd be okay. I mean, I'm.
Okay.
I think we'd be okay.
Any further questions or comments from the commission, from staff?
This is a 34-year-old written statement, so just be careful.
Like a preamble to the Constitution, huh? It's been vetted out. Okay? Any further questions or comments of staff? Is there a, any observations that need to be shared, or is there a motion?
I guess I might have one more question.
Yes, Mr. Beck?
I did see in 18.190.050, item A, that you did reserve the, the ability to waive that submittal of the large master plan document. Outside of that submittal, would it just be a written textual, text version then of what they plan to do, or is that what the intent is there?
Yeah, sure. It says the planning director may waive the submittal of the master plan in circumstances where the conditions of approval, restrictions, and limitations of the planned unit development can be addressed in the ordinance reclassifying the property. It is a text submittal, and.
Which is good.
Which, well, doesn't always help.
In this instance.
Yes, in this instance. We've, if we can accomplish the PUD with a, with, with text only, that's, that's what we would, that's what that allows, and I think you'll see in probably the next case we, a, a couple cases we bring before you here, probably in May, which would be the first implementation of this idea, they would be text, PUDs, what I recall, no, it wouldn't have a, a master plan.
But to be clear, they still have to submit like a plat, or a preliminary plat, or something that, not, not necessarily, they just have a legal description?
No, it's much like a, it's a conditional use permit that has conditions on it, and as long as we have the, a legal description and those conditions in text form.
Okay.
Sometimes you, you can do that, if it works.
Prescriptive, it's more like the prescriptive component of a PUD, where you basically in writing set up all the criteria.
Yeah. Yes, not every PUD's going to be site-based, so, yeah.
Okay. Other questions, observations? Seeing none, is there a motion?
So moved.
With the noted change of "not," as pointed out by Mr. Hall, may I add?
Yes, sir, I consider that a very friendly amendment.
And the primarily, sentence is gone forever, or?
Struck the sentence.
Okay, now, have we struck the sentence? Okay.
My motion strikes the sentence.
All right, we have, I like the affirmative approach. All right.